All right, I'm told it's 2 o'clock. In accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1985, Section 30-4-80-E, the following have been notified at the time place and agenda of this meeting, The Herald, The Charlotte Observer, CN2, NWRHI. Thank you all for joining. If you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So it's very exciting to see this many people in the audience. So it's very exciting to see this many people in the audience. But you guys have received a copy of the agenda. But you guys have received a copy of the agenda. While in executive session, we considered the selection of the superintendent. And unless there are adjustments or corrections, And unless there are adjustments or corrections, our next item is executive session to consider the selection of the superintendent. our next item is executive session to consider the selection of the superintendent. And maybe we're going to have an action to take. No, in all seriousness, and I am excited to see this many people here, So we are going to step into our room for executive session. So we are going to step into our room for executive session. and I'm hoping there's some watching too. We will be as quick as we can. We will be as quick as we can. I'm sorry, entertain, talk amongst yourselves. I'm sorry, entertain, talk amongst yourselves. This is the most important decision that this group of seven people Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Can I get a motion to go into executive session? will make during any of our times on this board.
Motion to go into executive session. Motion to go into executive session.
No return. No return. It hasn't been done in 15 years.
It should just be like 45 minutes. It should just be like 45 minutes.
Wayne was the only one that was around for that. And... Yep, that is true.
I'm still waiting on Dr. Epps.
He's still here.
Not gone yet.
We're still here. But it has been an amazing process for the last three or four months. You know, we set a schedule. We worked with BWP. They've been amazing. They were very helpful. We saw amazing candidates. No surprise. It confirmed what we knew. A lot of people want to be a part of this district, especially in the hot seat. Several of our candidates specifically said, "It's not just that I'm looking to become a superintendent. It's that I'm looking to become this superintendent." Right? That was the reason they applied, was specifically because of this role. And a lot of people in this room are who they are looking forward to working with. So we spent a lot of time together. We've, I think, come out stronger as a board because of the conversations that we've had that have really solidified for us what makes this district special and therefore what is so important to find in this role. And so I think we're ready for a motion.
Hmm, y'all. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize our board chair and legal counsel to negotiate a contract to become effective on July 1, 2025, for the position of superintendent of Fort Mill School District, York 4 of South Carolina to Mr. Gray Young.
Second.
Um, however, we have a motion and a second to offer the position of superintendent to Mr. Gray Young effective July 1st. Is there any discussion?
I have a few things. As mentioned, we had a lot, we had a great process and came up with a lot of good candidates. I said it several times throughout the process. I think we were in a win-win situation as far as the district goes. Obviously, the candidates, you know, there's only one winner. But we couldn't have made a really a bad decision, but we can make a best decision. And that's what I think we did. So I'm 100% behind it.
Yep. I am excited for the opportunities for this district to continue to grow and achieve the vision and the thoughts and the ideas that Mr. Young has put forth. And I have every confidence with the support of the people in this room, our public, this board, that we will continue to be Fort Mill strong. And I am looking forward to working together to help make that come together.
Go ahead.
Nope, go ahead.
Y'all didn't let me go the other day.
He's got four or five things he wants to say.
Wait, I think 15.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, we're ready.
Oh, you're not ready, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to return to public session.
Second.
We are back in open session. While in executive session, we considered the selection of the superintendent. And maybe we're going to have an action to take. No, in all seriousness, and I am excited to see this many people here, and I'm hoping there's some watching too. This is the most important decision that this group of seven people will make during any of our times on this board. Hasn't been done in 15 years. Wayne was the only one that was around for that.
Yeah, right. That is true.
I'm still waiting on Dr. Epps.
Still here.
Not gone yet.
Are still here. But it has been an amazing process for the last three or four months. You know, we set a schedule. We worked with BWP. They've been amazing. They were very helpful. We saw amazing candidates. No surprise. It confirmed what we knew. A lot of people want to be a part of this district, especially in the hot seat. Several of our candidates specifically said, it's not just that I'm looking to become a superintendent, it's that I'm looking to become this superintendent. Right? That was the reason they applied was specifically because of this role. And a lot of people in this room are who they are looking forward to working with. So we spent a lot of time together. We've, I think, come out stronger as a board because of the conversations that we've had that have really solidified for us what makes this district special and therefore what is so important to find in this role. And so I think we're ready for a motion.
Hmm, y'all. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize our board chair and legal counsel to negotiate a contract to become effective on July 1, 2025, for the position of superintendent of Fort Mill School District, York IV of South Carolina to Mr. Gray Young.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
To offer the position of superintendent to Mr. Gray Young effective July 1. Is there any discussion?
I have a few things.
Okay.
As mentioned, we had a lot, we had a great process and came up with a lot of good candidates. I said it several times throughout the process. I think we were in a win-win situation as far as the district goes. Obviously, the candidates, you know, there's only one winner. But we couldn't have made a really a bad decision, but we can make a best decision. And yes, that's what I think we did. So I'm 100% behind it.
Yep. I am excited for the opportunities for this district to continue to grow and achieve the vision and the thoughts and the ideas that Mr. Young has put forth. And I have every confidence with the support of the people in this room, our public, this board, that we will continue to be Fort Mill strong. And I am looking forward to working together to help make that come together.
Go ahead.
Nope. Go ahead.
Y'all didn't let me go the other day.
He's got four or five things he wants to say.
Wait, I think 15.
This was quite the journey. And when this began, I had my conversation with Michelle, talked about her stomach hurting. Speak to Christie by a variety of things. I don't think you all realize the amount of love, energy and focus that this board has exhibited during this process. When I tell you that we get into the deliberation on how we go from six to three and go to one, it's much tougher than what you all believe.
Yeah.
And for me, when I make my decisions on this here, I'm looking at for how do I disqualify individuals? Because in some instances, there may be some shared experiences. But I just want to share with you all, the reason why I was a fan of Gray being in his position. He was the only one that talked about being a transformational superintendent. Now, for someone who's been here for a very long time and to talk about being a transformational superintendent, just Google that when you get a chance. And you'll find out that's, that for someone like Gray to say something like that is powerful. For me, when I take a look in a mirror and I think about the questions that I ask, people's responses matter. How you answer my question matters. How you look at me matters. Your choice of words matter. When we walked around the school district and we had to district, ordained a district, that mattered. So I just want to say to you all personally, you all did a wonderful job in supporting us as best you could. But I just want to say to you all with no equivocation, the gentleman that you guys are getting has grown over these last three years in my eyes. And I just wanted to share that with you.
Yeah. I think what I have to say carries on. You know, Gray talked to us pretty candidly about his journey, starting in Pat Ware's kindergarten class at Fort Mill Primary School. And sort of ticked off all of the different things that he's done as part of this district. From being a student, to being a parent, to being a volunteer, to working at every single level, elementary school, middle school, high school, coaching, supporting maintenance in the summer, working at the district office. It became clear that when we looked at that stakeholder profile, that everybody worked so hard and everybody contributed to, that he had a clear understanding of where we've been and has seen change and how we've grown. And the one thing that's remained constant over all that time since he started kindergarten and as a five-year-old till now, is that we are still have this standard of excellence right here. And he was clearly the candidate that was able to articulate to this board that this right here isn't good enough, that we need to keep going.
Yep.
And that was the difference. He knows where we've been and he knows where we need to go. So by far.
Lippi, you want to go?
I mean, I can. You just want to beat the tail end.
Sure.
I'm sure from your seats, it would have been easy. I thought when I was on the other side of this process, that whenever they have to choose somebody to replace Chuck, that'll be easy for them. But having been through it on this end, this was so hard. Because we care so much. And we really wanted to do a good job. And we did not want to screw up a wonderful legacy. So I went in trying to have blinders about how well I knew Gray and just say, okay, objectively, objectively, objectively. So yes, a national search firm, objectively, they'll tell us if he's as good as the 40 other candidates. And they said, oh yeah, he's pretty good. And objectively, they'll screen out of 10 and they'll tell us if he's one of the top six. And they said, you should have a conversation. And then it came to us and we said, okay, rubber's hitting the road. Let's do, let's do the job. And everything that we wanted for the future of Fort Mill Schools was expressed very clearly. And then we even said, Gray, you know, some people are going to say, you didn't earn it. And he said, I think having spent my whole time in Fort Mill is a strength and not a And he's right.
Yeah, so I came in, it's not very often that, you know, as a trustee, we get to share opinions really on something like this. But I came in truly going, I didn't really understand, like, it's like Gray Young's going to be the next, like, but the whole, with the whole search process, I really, I genuinely felt like, hey, I feel like Gray's our guy. And going through the process, this board knows that was a struggle for me. Because the quality of our candidates blew me away. They blew me away. But something, something Gray said during part of this process was, you know, it's just, and it was, you ever hear somebody say something and just carries a different level to it? It just carries a different weight to it? He said, it's not in my DNA to let, to let Fort Mill fail. And just the way, the weight that he, that he said that with, you knew that you knew that you knew that he was telling the truth. He also, on separate occasions, mentioned every single one of our students, the number. He said, I don't round that number up for a reason, because every single one of them matter. That number changed different times and he updated in that, in that period of time. He keeps up with these things. As I got to sit with him and listen to him talk with students and hear how he interacted, it just fit. He just fit with the culture. He's a true leader. It's been, it's been phenomenal as one of the, as one of the newer board members to see Gray grow in every area. And we look at his team that he's put together. It's phenomenal. It's absolutely phenomenal. This could not go to a better individual. And we are, we are blessed to have you here. And the best is yet to come for Fort Mill School District because of this.
One more comment, Christie?
Yes.
I promise it'll be quick.
So the last thing I want to say is, so when Gray was discussing being a transformational superintendent, I think that when you go and you take a look at one of the departments and all of our departments in the district have done a wonderful job and two nights ago clearly illustrated that. But I just want to say to you that the, that Department of Student Services, I challenge you all to go do some homework and take a look at where it was three years ago and where it is now.
Yep.
You look at the things that have happened with Rich and what's taken place there. You take a look at this leadership development thing with Jocelyn. And you take a look at what Cory's been doing, what she articulated the other evening. Those are all transformational stuff. That takes a while to come together. So, all right, I'm done.
I want one more chance. Because you made, you reminded me of something I wanted to say is, when we were having lunch with students at Nation Ford High School, and Joe and I were fortunate enough to sit with Gray, we had the, we had Gray leave and we cleared the room and it was just the students. And we're like, well, you just had your chance. Tell us what you think. And the first word that came out of a student's mouth was, he is genuine. Right? And the reality is, you can fool a lot of people, but everybody in this room that's sitting here right now knows that you can't fool kids. And every single one of those students talked about how genuine he was and how clear it was that he loved, he loved what, not only what he does, but where he is. So.
So when Gray was five, I think, I think he was five, and I don't know if your mom was watching, but if, when she had had an accident and asked me if I would come over and babysit one night, was the first time I really ever interacted with Gray. And if you'd have told me then that we'd be sitting here now, and that I would be sitting here and we'd be talking about him in this way, I'd have never believed you. But, but I'm very excited. And so I would just say, without further ado, unless there's further discussion, all those in favor of naming Mr. Gray Young as our next superintendent, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right. The motion carries. Congratulations. And believe it or not, that was the only order of business for the day.
Motion to adjourn.
We'll be back on June 3rd with the budget.